...session for September 4th, 2019. If everyone would please silence or shut off their cell phones at this time, would appreciate it. And join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So Melanie, please go over any deletions or additions.
We do not have any deletions. We have two additions, an MOU between Lake County Community Justice and Lake County Sheriff's Department, and the addition of the categorical exclusion project manager.
Thank you very much. Board, anything you'd like to add?
None for me.
Okay, with that, we have public comment. Is there any public comment at this time? Mayor?
I just have to put out there big kudos to your probation department of all the work they've been doing and what they've done at the city parking lot and everything, hanging all the tables and everything, getting that all screwed up and helping out around town. They've done a good job.
Thank you very much, Mayor. We appreciate that, and we're very proud of our community service workers and our department that makes that happen, so thank you. Other public comment?
Can I just say one thing real quick? I'll be brief. Oh.
I got the camera.
Do I take them off there? Can I stay back here?
You can ride on up if we want to get your camera, sir.
Oh, boy. I know. Well, I already talked to you guys yesterday, but I just wanted to say publicly, thank you for the last two and a half years off and on I've covered the commissioners. This is my last meeting with the commissioners, because I will be leaving next weekend, actually. It's coming up pretty quickly. I just wanted to thank you guys for everything. When I started here, I didn't know much or at all anything about government, because I was a straight sports guy in college. So I just wanted to thank you guys for teaching me a lot, and whenever the new guy starts, if I'm still here, I'll bring him around and introduce you guys to him.
We want to thank you also, Michael. It's still sports broadcasting because we play defense all the time. We're always juggling around trying to make things happen, but you've been a great addition to our county as a person, your personality and everything that you do, along with your professionalism and your position. So I'm happy for you. Lake County needs all the people we can get, but you're going to get close to family, get back home, so congratulations to you, but thank you for your time.
Of course. Tell somebody quick.
Michael, we really are going to miss you. We're really excited about you too, just being able to go to this new job and get out of here.
It wasn't an easy decision to leave.
You've been a great friend. You've been an awesome person to work with for the whole time I've been here, so yeah, thank you.
I just helped to bring some stability. That was really my main goal when I started.
Absolutely.
Send some of those overflow businesses, industries to Lake County.
You know, a lot of people don't believe, like, you know, they don't...I tell them Lake County, they're like, "Where?" So I've taken a lot of pictures.
We did that here in Oregon.
Yeah. But that's what that's meant to be.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael.
So with that, we're going to move right on into our agenda. We have the penalty, we have the state legislatures here. Before I introduce the first one, I want to make a comment and a thank you to Senator Lithicam. I do not make a lot of trips to Salem. He acknowledged me and our probation director, Jake Greer, on the Senate floor. I was able to be there for a short time. That was very honorable for me, and thank you very much for that. And I hope to get there on the House side and be able to be there a little bit more, but that was moving for me, sir, so I thank you very much. With that said, I'd like to introduce Representative Reski, and he's going to take the lead, and he will do the introduction of the others as they step up.
If you give me a second, you do a bit of technical, fundamentaly hopefully.
We're experiencing technical difficulties right now. We're being backed on by...
Hopefully not that long.
So while he's doing that, I might as well acknowledge Senator Lithicam, Representative Finley, Representative Vicki Bries Iverson, got it right, as our new appointed representative. So welcome, as Representative Reski's doing that, so I want to make sure for the record that you guys are all acknowledged. And you did meet our mayor. I want to acknowledge the mayor that spoke. That was more than a second. I covered you for more than a second.
Thank you very much. Is that yours? Yeah, well, then I need mine.
So we do have monitors both ways, so if you see us looking through you, we're actually looking at the monitor.
He's a high-tech guy. He's always showing up.
Wasn't that what he did for a living before?
Yes, it was.
He's probably supplementing right now also. They don't get paid much.
It's work and dress rehearsal, and of course, it's not working. Did you catch the...
The what?
Sure.
I like the cartoon that says, "Push anybody to talk, or to continue, the guy's got a great big hammer." That's me. Here, I'll need you.
All right, well, we're ready to go. Again, my name for the record is Ewan Nereski, State Representative from House District 56, which encompasses beautiful southern climate in Lake County. I like to say, "Klamath County is the hidden gem of Oregon," which makes Lake County the hidden, hidden gem of Oregon. It's an honor to be here for you today, and thank you very much for this, so we can...as I have colleagues from the House with me, and one senator, I know Senator Benz would like to be here, and he's actually the guy that taught me how to do this, go around and meet with commissioners and have a legislative review after a long session, so hopefully we're doing a good job in his stead. I have a presentation that's about...I was telling Representative Bries Iverson that if my caffeine is still going, it'll be 15 minutes; if not, it'll be 30 minutes. So somewhere in that range is where you'll have...feel free to ask questions at any time. We're interruptible, and my colleagues, please interject where you see fit.
Well, I'll start. Is there coffee nearby?
Right around the corner.
Is this caffeinated water?
Here we have it. Touche. So just to open up, we just finished the legislative session. It ended on June 30th. It was the first time since we've been in this new format of 160 days during odd number of years, and 35 days in a short and even number of years, that we use the full 160 days per session. So we were there as long as we possibly could be, which is sometimes not very good for the people of Oregon, but we used up all the time. The makeup of the legislature this time was 22 Republicans to 38 Democrats in the House, which gave them what's called a supermajority. In the Senate, it was 12 Republicans to 18 Democrats, which also gave them a supermajority. And what a supermajority means is not only can the majority party dictate policy, they can also raise taxes without one minority vote, and that's indeed what you'll see happen. And then, to make matters in my perspective a little worse, is the governors of that same majority party. So we've had times in Oregon, five times in Oregon where you've had a House and a Senate be supermajority status, but sometimes the governors are the opposite party, and so it brings imbalance. We didn't have that balance this time around. So I'd like to talk a little bit about revenue and taxes starting out. So first thing is, we had record revenue again. I've been in the House for three years, and every year we have record revenue at the State Department. This has been going on not just for three years, but for 10 years now. Every year, the State Department of Revenue has more money in its coffers. And to add to that, the legislature on whole increased taxes on Oregonians roughly about $5 billion in new taxes in little over five months.
So that amounts to about $600 a piece?
About $600 a person. So if you're a retired couple of two, you're going to expect to be paying $1,200 more in taxes. If you're a family of four, expect over $2,000 more in taxes, just to stay at the same level that you're at today.
Can I interject one thing?
Sure.
Back to the record revenue number?
Yeah, sure.
I'm sure you've all heard of the kicker, which is anytime you exceed your revenue projections. The individual income revenue exceeding the projections was $1.7 billion. And everybody talks about, well, we raised $1.7 billion or more than we thought we would, which is what we really didn't need. Another number with that is $800 million of corporate income taxes. So when you add those two numbers together, we tax the living heck out of everybody and everything.
And that's before these new taxes come into effect.
So do you guys foresee businesses not coming to Oregon for this reason, or businesses leaving Oregon for this reason?
Most definitely. When I was one of the Oregon Eleven, and you'll hear that story later, but scooting across the Idaho border, what you see directly across the border is a booming economy. You see construction everywhere in small towns and in large towns. You see prosperity, you know, calling individuals to achieve their goals and their dreams in life, and they're moving out of state to do it. In the same way, Oregon is profiting a little bit because California is in a worse situation than we are. They look better...we look better in a technical sense on paper, but there's only 4.1 million persons in the state. California doesn't look as good, but nevertheless, they have 39 billion people in the state. And so as 100,000 leave California and they show up in Oregon, we think, "Oh, we're growing. The economy's great." No, it's just that they're leaving a worse condition than we currently have. But in the same time, the future will speak volumes to how bad conditions get in Oregon as they migrate to other states that are calling. I've traveled on economic development, researched through the Midwest and the eastern seaboard. You've got Tennessee and Kentucky and North Carolina. Joe Nguyen moved their corporate headquarters out of Clamath Falls. Where did they go? They went to North Carolina. Why? Simply because of tax policy. And so you'll see that people and businesses and corporations will make that move. They'll do it slowly, i.e., they won't just close shop and move. What they'll do is they'll expand in other environments. So they'll slowly start to no longer expand within the state of Oregon and start up shop elsewhere until that finally becomes a big enough center to call that headquarters. And that's exactly how it worked with the Joe Nguyen story, and that's been over the last 10 years.
I might apply to test to that, coming from Malheur County, which is a border county. $40 million worth of interest for businesses in Malheur County moved to Idaho in the last four years.
Wow.
That's, you know, two major packing sheds, a car dealership, an implement dealership, a bakery, the list goes on and on. I mean, at least $40 million of new investment built within a mile of the border. All Oregon businesses moved to Idaho.
That's crazy. $40 million for Malheur County, that's a bunch.
Yeah. But there's a reason it's Forest County and the state. I'm sorry.
No, that's good, thanks. The last bullet on the slide is indirect taxes. So the pernicious thing about these taxes is they're not going to appear on your income tax statement or out of your payroll. They're all...most of them are heavily taxing businesses. So all you're going to see is prices of food, pharmacy, groceries and gas go up, and not understand why the prices of everything's going up around you, that's where that money's going to go, because the businesses are going to be taxed. They're then in turn going to pass it on to consumers. So that's where this is kind of pernicious. It's not a direct tax on people, it's an indirect tax, and most Oregonians won't see what's happening. They'll just know that their income isn't going as far as it used to. The next thing I'd like to talk about is what's called a cuts budget. And I don't know how the county here does its budgeting, but the way the state does it is based on this thing called current service level. And so the way it works is an agency's asked to project what their costs are going to be for the next two years. So they take what they're paying, what it costs now, they roll up their salary cost, they roll up their benefit cost, they roll up their equipment cost, they roll up whatever other costs they've got, and let's say that means that they need 7% more than what they get today. If the legislature gives them 6%, that's not a 6% increase in state parlance, that's a 1% budget cut. And so we're fighting that as Republicans say, "No, we're increasing the salary of 6%," and state agencies are coming back, and our parents on their side are demagoguing the whole notion, "No, it's you're actually cutting their budget." And the problem with this whole approach to budgeting is it gives no incentive for efficiency, gives no incentive for economies of scale. It gives...I like to say, when you think of the words efficiency and effectiveness, what's the antonym that comes to your mind? And as I think about it, the antonym is always government, because that's what it is. Government is not efficient. Government is rarely effective in what it tries to do on large writ, and this current service level budgeting approach does not help the factor.
I'll speak to that. We had a bill that actually got heard in committee to change the budgeting process from the current service level budgeting, which your county probably also uses, to a zero-based budgeting notion, which means strike all of your books and needs, bring everything down to zero, and rebuild your organization from the ground up. What's your mission? What are your goals? What are your objectives? How many staff will that need? How many cars and computers and desks and how many square foot for how many people, et cetera? Build it up and come to a new budget, but starting from zero versus starting from our current operating level. We got a hearing on it, and there was interest in finding one agency that we think would be a good test case agency. As the session ended out, it never got out of committee. We never really picked that agency to test, but it would be a great opportunity for the state to step out in a positive direction and fix the budgeting issue. As Werner pointed out, Rep. Reski mentions inefficiency, and the built-in bureaucracy just grows itself because it's there. It's there, and it has nowhere else to go but growth. And so these are still topics that are on the table. They're worthy of discussion, and I think we'll bring those bills forward in the next long session. We don't have time during the sort session.
Thanks, Senator. So the last bullet point here is where does the funding problem lie? So we have record revenue, and we're adding more taxes, and yet we've got this system of budgeting that doesn't build efficiency. And so from my perspective, whenever you hear about a funding problem or a lack of revenue, really, I think the problem's on the cost and spending side of state government. It's not on the revenue side. We've proven that we continue to get record revenue in the state, and we always seem to be short. Let's see here. The next thing I want to talk about is state employee benefits changes, and there's two bills that went forward that affect county as well. One was Senate Bill 1049, which was called the PERS Reform Bill. And I put reforms in quotes because it really did reform a whole lot. It had two parts to the bill. One part was that state employees will now contribute a certain percentage of their salary to PERS, to retirement benefits directly. As you might imagine, public unions were very against this idea. I think that's a fantastic idea. I think that retirement is your responsibility, and you should contribute something towards it. The problem that we have is that we've seen this playbook before, that the governor in the next negotiated cycle just raises the salary of those employees that amount to cover for the cost of the retirement benefits that they have to contribute. And that's how that game's played. So there was no assurances that that would not happen, so that was one negative against the bill. The other thing is it took basically the mortgage of what we have with PERS, and it just made it longer, it just kicked it down the road. So we just kind of refinanced ourselves from a 15-year mortgage to a 30-year mortgage, which then opens the state up to...and during 15 years, you're prone to recession. During 30 years, you're very likely to some sort of recession or a couple of recessions. So that was the fix that was done to PERS, which I put the reform in PERS and put it in quotes that you'll hear about. The other bill is House Bill 2266, and it was what called the Double Benefits Bill. In 2017, Senate Bill 1067 basically said, "If you're employed by the state and your spouse is employed by the state, we're giving you both benefits, and one spouse is using those benefits to cover both of you, and the other spouse is declining benefits and taking cash." And so the state thought they could save money by saying, "If you're both employed by the state, only one of you gets to keep benefits, and the other one doesn't get to turn that into cash." Now, this is a...it seems like a good idea, but it's not a great idea for counties like Lake County where a disproportionate number of workers are state employees, and a lot of the employment comes from state employment. And so when the school district, for example, is trying to recruit a third-grade teacher, and they say, "Oh, we can pay you $40,000," and you're...the spouse is then working at the correctional facility already, nor with that $40,000 could turn it into his $45,000 by denying benefits and getting cash. With Senate Bill 1067 in 2017, that offer could no longer be made. So this bill just basically unwound that and made it so that no matter who you're married to, you get your benefits, you can decline your benefits for cash. And I...my opinion is, I don't think the state has any business knowing who I'm working, who my spouse is working for, and what their benefits are. You should employ a person because of their merit, and you compensate them justly for that, not based on who their spouse may or may not be. So those are two things that you'll hear probably here in Lake County and that were in the legislature. The next thing I'd like to talk about is the Senate Republicans' walkout. And before I do that, I'd like Representative Finley to kind of give you a little brief overview of what House Republicans did in this environment of superminority status. So we couldn't stop any bills, and we couldn't stop any taxes just by simply voting. We were outgunned at every phase. So Representative Finley, if you'd...
Thank you, Representative. So the only thing that...what appeared to us, to the House Republicans long about the first part of March, is that we were at a record pace. I mean, the dock was full, bills were being slammed through, we were trying to argue and not being successful on anything. There's a constitutional provision that says, "Every bill must be read in full before it can be voted on." And at the start of every session, we, the minority party, has to agree to that, agree to only reading it by title only. And if we don't, if the majority does not agree to that, then they have to be read. So we stopped allowing bills to be read by title only about the first part of March, and required every bill to be read in full. A 100-page bill takes about two and a half to three and a half minutes per page. There were days that it would take four, five, six hours to read a bill in full, but we did that. We did that to slow the process down. We couldn't stop anything, so that was a constitutional tool for us to slow it down, and we did. We did that for about six weeks when we stopped, and then we worked three sessions a day, 15 hours a day, through the backlog. And so at the end of that, it was two weeks after we stopped doing that, we moved about 175 bills to the Senate. We had no other means to slow it down. We had no other means to stop anything. We could not, you know, quite often of those controversial bills, they were 22 no, but they were still passed by a majority, and they moved through, so we slowed it down. We gave our friends in the Senate 175 bills for their docket to work on.
Thanks, Representative. And so since we do have a state senator here, I thought rather than us giving our perspective, we'd give a firsthand account of somebody who was there and occurred all the discussions and have an outline of why Senate Republicans didn't just walk out once, but walked out twice, and what was the result of that action and why you took it.
Actually, you got that while I wasn't there.
Yeah, I was just going to say the same thing. That statement wasn't accurate.
Rep. Reski is right. There were two walkouts, and the first time we walked out, it was only for three days, and it was a very profitable three days. We struck...the iron was hot. We struck, and we got exactly what we were looking for. What we did was we stopped Senate Bill 978, which was a drastic gun measure possession and locking firearms and whatnot. The more dangerous portion of the firearm bill, and you'll see this at the federal level as well as the state level, is there are literally millions of...if there's 4 million Oregonians, and that's including small children, their parents each own more than that, so there's 8 million firearms, or 10 or 12 million firearms in the state of Oregon. There is not enough police officers, sheriffs, to confiscate those weapons or to know who has them or anything. And so what happens is you get a method of enforcement that is very selective. Now, you might wonder, well, who would the officer select? And that's the point. The point is, you don't know. Is it a political selection like we saw in the USSR, right, during, you know, Solzhenitsyn's Gulag Archipelago? Or is it something more attuned to the guy who gets stopped for a traffic stop and has marijuana possession, and then his firearm gets confiscated or whatever, civil asset forfeiture, whatever those things might look like? In this case, it would be criminal forfeiture, not civil forfeiture. But there were so many facets to this legislation, and the other one that was really subtle was a definition of strict liability for the firearm owner when crimes were committed by a subsequent theft of that firearm. So that somebody who owns a firearm and is stolen, even five years later is used in criminal activity, the owner of that weapon is held responsible for the crime that was committed by the other perpetrator while using that weapon. And we thought that that was just unfathomable logic to assign that to the owner. We don't see it when your car gets stolen, that you're now responsible for the bank robbery that happened five years later using your rig. And so we put the brakes on hard there. The other one was also strict liability, i.e., civil liability for damage or crime or harm that was committed using your firearm that was by another perpetrator after your firearm was stolen. Those issues, to handle liability, what you would do is you run out to the insurance market and insure yourself against that liability, just like auto liability. However, the insurance market in the state of Oregon could never handle the amount of firearms and the, quote, "potential" that exists out there from a statistical perspective. So we put the stops on Senate Bill 978. We put the stops on House Bill 3063, which was a mandatory vaccine bill. And the mandatory vaccine bill, it was difficult simply because what we're doing is denying moms and dads the freedom to have consent and medical knowledge and information about what their child was being vaccinated with. And so we thought, "Look, if you've got to make this a public choice, it's got to be free market. You can't just say, 'Line up, and everybody gets the vaccine on Tuesday,' and there's no wherewithal for philosophical, religious, or medical exemptions." Those were removed. Those were removed. About the only medical exemption that remained in was something like an epileptic shock, but that's too late, it already happened. And so it was a very bad bill. The last bill that we asked for a reset on was House Bill 2020, which is the cap-and-trade bill, the carbon tax bill, the carbon czar bill, and it goes by any number of cap and swindle, et cetera. All of those phrases were just highlighting how unfair the bill was to rural Oregonians. And we said, look, we've got, at the time, we had 68 amendments, 67 or 68 amendments on the board, none of them got heard. We asked for a reset, we asked for Senator Benz to be a part of that conversation, and then when we came back, we marched forward with the reset, House Bill 2020. It never got reset, it stayed the same. We ended up with 118 amendments, none of them got heard, listened to. We never had a say in what this might look like, exemptions for rural Oregon. Quite frankly, we freight everything by tonnage. You know, the freight haulers are doing cows, hay, timber, onions, potatoes, you name it, it's going out in massive freight haulers, and they're on the highways, and they're using diesel, and there are no electric vehicles that can haul potatoes. So we put the thumbs down to that. The last time, we finally said, we can't stay around for this nightmare to get hammered down the throats of rural Oregonians, and we left. And I think we actually represented our constituents well. What you'll hear is the Republicans, Senate abandoned their jobs, and we didn't do our business. And I think we did do our job, we did do our business well, we served the communities that we represent, and out of the 130, must be 36 bills that were in the calendar and ready to roll, 128 of them passed and became law. So it's not like we weren't there to do our job. 128 of those items came steamrolling through in the 20, in the two eight-hour sessions on Saturday and Sunday, the 29th and 30th of June. So we did our job, we got work done, we stopped some bad bills, and it will be, it will be interesting to see what happens during this next session. All of those items are still on the loose, no doubt they'll get forced and pushed through again. The governor is right now, and the, the, both houses are strategizing on how to remove the constitutional requirement for a two-thirds majority quorum. They want to move it down to a simple majority quorum, and that would mean, that would mean anything goes, taxes go, anything goes. And so it's...
All you need is a majority.
All you need is a simple majority to start business, and then you'd still need three fifths for taxes, but right now, what, which is 60% right now, what quorum majority requires is 66%. And so, you know, it's a very close number, but close enough that it really takes this massive amount of representative power to, to control all features that are included in the governing process. And all we're asking for is more time, more science. Look, we've got science, we've got data, we've got perspective, we've got alternatives. Last night at the town hall, I mentioned alternative of tax, and you get 75% of it back, et cetera. That was Senator Benz's suggestion. I actually don't think we should tax like that. I think American innovation, ingenuity, and prosperity is the answer. Ask yourself if America is the most, is the highest polluter in the world, and the answer's no. And it's, it's not even, it's down at number 15 or 16 today, and ahead of that are countries like Bangladesh and Sri Lanka, and Indonesia, and Malaysia, and India, and China. They're all scattered in there, but their, their economic prosperity, their robustness, their innovation in technological appeal is several, you know, notches below where the U.S. stands, and that's why we enjoy clean water and clean air, minus forest fires. And, and we enjoy what the rest of the world wants, and that's why they flock here across our borders. And so it's about time we help spread those ideas into those countries so that they too can prosper and step up to the plate, clean their own rivers, and clean their own environs. Any questions with regard to that?
Well, you're making a great point, you know, where they want to move it from the 66% majority to the 60% majority, where they, in order to raise taxes, and really, I mean, in this day and age, myself personally feel it should go the other way. If you're going to actually raise taxes, raise the taxes on the individual person, that you're specifically in office to protect their rights, really ought to raise that percentage to where this is a good idea, if we should raise taxes, really ought to get more, like an 80%.
Yeah.
This should be really something to consider and talk about. This shouldn't be something that we can decide simply because there's more of us in the room than there are the other people on the other side.
Right, right.
But another thing, you were going back to Bill 978 on the gun bill. We had some rather interesting discussions about that early on. I believe we even sent out a letter to this, regarding this bill to you guys. And you brought up, you know, how do you discriminate? How do you decide who you're going to enforce this law with? And it brings up the issue of targeting, who do you target first?
Right.
And, and you mentioned, you know, Solzhenitsyn's Gulag Archipelago. You probably don't even have to go back that far. In fact, in the early 2000s, there was a huge lawsuit and issue over the fact that the IRS was specifically targeting Tea Party members on back taxes and everything else simply because of their political affiliation. So that kind of thing happens even in this country, in this century, today.
Yeah.
And the idea of passing these laws or you give the state this incredible amount of power is extremely worrisome to county officials and our constituents here.
Right. And that concentrated power is really the crux of the issue. The carbon czar, the office of the carbon director for the state of Oregon was created in House Bill 2020. That's a single individual that works at the pleasure of the governor, who isn't an elected official, the public has no recourse or say in the matter, the governor chooses that individual, and that individual would be responsible for nearly $2 billion of economic activity within the state. And that's an enormous amount of power, and you can imagine how that power gets leveraged against different businesses or different industries based upon a perspective coming from a single individual, because that individual was the decision maker.
All of the rule writing left, was left within the carbon czar position, it was not a, legislature was not involved, would not have been involved with this.
And those are all things we demanded in the reset. So if you're wondering why Senate Republicans denied quorum, those are the reasons why.
Yeah. Well, this goes back actually to a little bit of our water discussion last night in terms of, I mean, you give this amount of power to an individual or agency where they can now, you've created the agency through a legislative process, but you've given it this amount of power that it can change the rules now, however it sees fit, without any checks and balances and without any legislative oversight, where there are no elected officials, where they're just appointed, and they can decide the rules as they seem fit.
That's correct.
And they may not make huge adjustments, but they make small ones over a 50-year period. And at the end of a 60-year period or 70-year period, people have an incredible, less amount of rights than they had 60 years ago, which is, I think, what a lot of people are seeing, and they, they don't like.
It's just like what we were talking about last night with Oregon water.
Yeah, that's...
You know, making these rules that you can't drill a well than a mile.
And maybe some of those rules are okay.
Right.
Yeah, and, but it's not up to the people to decide or the legislative process where we can have an actual discussion where this goes on in the public side.
Right, right. And, and I think the tragic part of that is some of those rules may be okay under the administration that created them, and then how do they get cocked or twisted in the next administration or next? So gradualism is the real problem, as, as more and more power gets accumulated in the governor's office, in the legislative branches, and you get that accumulation of kind of bureaucratic power, the bureaucracy, if you will. How do people respond to that? How do they elect officials who will stand against the bureaucracy and for, and for representing the people who are the voters, who are paying taxes, the mom and dads of the world? That's the key issue.
Okay, thank you very much. Just, you know, next thing I'd like to talk about is just notable bills that did not pass and notable bills that did pass. And the first one on the list, obviously, is cap and trade. It did not pass partly the House Republicans. We spent six and a half hours on the floor debating this bill, which is the longest time that anybody in the building remembers debating one bill. So we gave it our all in the vote, turned out to be 36 to 22, or something like that, 36 to 24. An interesting thing about cap and trade is it's not a tax, it's a fee. So all it's required is a simple majority to pass it. So this is a problem when government gets to redefine the rules of what something may or may not be in order to get the number of votes they wanted. So cap and trade did not tax, cap and trade did not pass. Also forced childhood vaccinations, what the senator talked about. Kicker theft, I like to call it that. So with the massive amount of revenue, there's a kicker law, and the kicker law basically is unique to Oregon, and it's a good law. And what it does is it prevents government from extending itself too big, too quick. It helps government not grow so fast. So the law basically says that state economists estimate what revenue is going to be two years out, and then legislators budget to that amount. And then when the revenue comes in, if it's 2% or higher, we return that money back to the taxpayer. So there's a 2% extra that the state gets to keep above what their budgets were. Anything else gets to go back to the taxpayer. Well, that's $1.7 billion this time around, and we can be thankful in large part, our economy follows really closely the national economies. So the national economy's up, we're really up. National economy goes down, we're really down. We have wild swings, mostly because of our tax, the taxing system based on income tax. But we can really be thankful for, I'm just going to say it, the Trump tax cuts, the tax cut and jobs act of 2017 by House Republicans and Senate Republicans at the federal level, because it's given birth to this. We've seen this before when we had a large kicker, was coincidentally after Reagan's tax cuts and after Bush's tax cuts. So that Trump does the same thing with the tax cut, shouldn't really be a surprise to us, but it was a surprise, and so we have this $1.7 billion extra revenue. So with all that extra money out there, our friends on the other side of the aisle want to spend it and want to grow their favorite program. And so there was a lot of talk during session about taking that money away from taxpayers and just using it. Fortunately, that did not go forward, but no, it will be coming again.
The, the one, we, we talk in big numbers, 1.7 billion. Just, you know, keep in mind, that's $1,700 million. 1,700 million. I mean, that is a big chunk of money. The taxpayers overpaid, and now the state is with the, with the kicker theft bill, is threatening just to keep it, say, thanks for overpaying, we're going to keep it. People use their federal tax return check to go, you know, buy something when they get their federal money back. People often are looking for the kicker to do that, and the state's about to say, no, thanks, it's ours, we'll get to keep it and we'll use it for your best interest, honest.
Other bills not passed were gun control bills the senator described, and then there were a few devastating timber harvest bills that were for us. One was to increase fees for timber harvest, and another was to restrict where you could harvest timber, to make it basically nearly impossible to harvest timber profitably. Notable bills that did pass, we talked about this ad nauseam, but just mentioned lots of taxes. Early in session, Representative Finley made mention of this, that bills were coming down the pike really quick, and one of these was rent control, happened in the first month, the first state in the Union to have statewide rent control. And it just, right out of the chute, we were dealing with rent control, and we saw that if House Republicans, we said, if we don't try to slow this machine down, they're just going to continue to load the missiles and fire them. So we need to slow the process down just so the public can keep up with what's going on. Rent control, there's an article in the Portland Tribune that says that because of this bill, that now the supply of rental properties in Portland is decreasing. And that's what's going to happen with this bill, is the supply of rental properties across the state are going to decrease, and that was foreseen. And that's a problem, because the problem we have is we don't have enough supply. So if you create a policy that lowers your supply when your problem is you don't have enough supply, you're going to have more of a problem. And what I fear going forward is that our colleagues on the other side of the aisle go, oh, rent control's not strict enough, we need to ratchet it down. So that's what you're going to see probably coming forward on this.
Well, didn't, almost immediately, landlord started raising the rent. And that's what I've seen here, too.
Immediately, they raised it right before it came into effect. And then we had a, I'm a realtor, we had a lot of houses go on the market right after it happened. Unfortunately, now the way that that whole bill was put together is that we have to give such a, the landlord has to give such a notice that the buyer for this house can't block their loan for a month. Or to depend on circumstances. So it really has a short sight to it.
Well, it's almost a guarantee that rent's going to go up every year, because a lot of people, they adjust, the landowners, and somehow it's almost mandatory that the rent's going to go up every year.
And you can go up to the maximum.
Yep, every, every year, and that's, that's not good.
Which changes the competitive nature and everything of rents.
It's quite inflationary, because...
Very much so.
Yeah, yeah. And so it's, but this is one of the bills, as Rep. Reschke was explaining, it just went flying through. We didn't, we didn't get a lot of time, it didn't spend a lot of time in committee, it didn't spend a lot of time in the Senate, it got pushed straight through, you know, and, and ended up in the House, and next thing you know, the governor signed the bill.
And when they say pushed through, I don't know if you guys have gone to this, to say one to testify, these bills went through committee without any testimony from people who were being affected by them. They just would say, we don't have time for the testimony, and they take a vote and they move on. It was, I wasn't there for it, but it was in the...
And it was heard in committee on a Tuesday and was voted approved in the House on a Thursday.
On a Tuesday, 8 o'clock at night?
Yeah.
That was the other day.
It was...
Tuesday at 8 o'clock at night?
That's what they were, they would make these bills, the controversy was, they'd put them at a time where people wouldn't come.
8 o'clock at night?
I don't know if it was a good one, but there were several that were, I don't know what that one was.
Well...
Tactics.
I have to take my hat off to the folks on the other side of the aisle from you guys that they wanted to stay up that late to pass this bill forward through. That was, shows dedication.
Is that one of them?
I suppose so.
I have a different...
Dedication's nothing.
So from this legislator's perspective, I mean, this bill also had another pernicious effect in that it, no cause evictions got changed on how that was done. So now you, after, after one year, you can't use a no cause eviction to get a bad tenant out of your place. So what this is going to do is you'll be month to month for 11 months... So what this is gonna do is you'll be month to month for eleven months, and all of a sudden get an eviction notice by a landlord, because they may not be certain that you're really a good tenant or not. There's no incentive for them to say, oh, just stay on, because I can always use that if you become a bad tenant. It's better to flush everybody out every eleven months, and just, and there's plenty of supply out there, there's plenty of demand out there for rental properties. So for me to keep you here and take a chance that you might become a bad tenant in year two, yeah, I'll just get a new tenant and start the clock over. So this, this is really a poor policy to solve a problem of supply and...
Yeah, no, you're absolutely right. I mean, we used to build twelve thousand homes per one million people in this country. Today, we build four thousand homes per one million people. That's one-third of what we used to build. That has created a supply and demand issue, and we're not addressing that issue, we're also logging less trees than we used to, there's, the cost of homes has gone up. It's the largest increase to family household budgets in the last fifty years, where you could buy a nice, brand-new home fifty years ago for nineteen thousand, whereas today, you know, you're looking at two hundred and somewhat thousand. In this county, in Lake, we were having this discussion earlier, it's about two hundred and forty dollars a square foot to build a house here in Lake County. We don't know how to fix that issue quite yet, we're still working on that. But it's not our fees, because they haven't changed in how many years?
I've been very pro-keep our fees down, make us attractive to come here.
Forty years or so like that? I don't think we've really made any changes to our fees. We're lower than Harding County, so...
So a real problem I have is more government and private business. It's more of a dictatorship, I hate to say that out loud, but whenever I invest and have a rental house, and the government tells me how I can charge, what I can charge, what my percentage is, that is not what America was founded on. That is government getting in my private business. I don't like that at all, and I know, I see heads nodding, we're all in this.
Yeah, we know.
It just, you know, I'm very fortunate, my years in government, my wife's years in government, but it just seems like we're starting to overreach in too many places that goes against the American dream of being in our own business and being progressive. So I'll get off my bandwagon a little bit.
You're absolutely right, and I think it brings a huge amount of volatility to the market, where we can't actually solve these issues, because the government is putting its finger and constantly moving the scale around the place, so we don't really know how to solve it, if we have all these other volatile issues to address.
Well, and I think that's why I, all of us sitting here today, why we're involved at a political level, is trying to help for the people, not really against them.
For which we really greatly appreciate all of you.
Yes.
Just to say that this bill is on my removal list.
Thank you.
And that list unfortunately continues to grow larger and larger, but I pray somebody else will use it. Just moving on, tobacco taxes, this is three hundred and fifty million dollars. It will be, it's referred to voters, so voters get a say on this one on the November twenty twenty ballot, it will be there. Basically, it raises the price per cigarette, a pack of cigarette, two dollars, to be on parity with California and Washington. It adds a fifty cent tobacco tax on cigars, and then taxes vaping. Representative Finley and I heard this bill and revenue, and the arguments continue to be made, well, we need money for the Oregon Health Plan, and smokers coming down the way are the biggest customers of the Oregon Health Plan, so they should have some skin in the game. I was arguing, and I know Rep. Finley had this argument, is that our current tax policy under two dollars under a pack for cigarettes in Oregon compared to California and Washington brings California and Washington buyers to Oregon, and they just don't buy cigarettes here, they buy other things while they're here. So retail business does very well, especially from Astoria to Walla Walla along the Washington side of the river. We get a lot of people coming into the state, and they're buying cigarettes and paying the taxes subsidizing the Oregon Health Plan, right? So we're getting free money, basically, from out of state to subsidize the Oregon Health Plan. By putting it on parity, you disincentivize that behavior, those people are gonna stay home at large, and now we lose that. So what's gonna look like, it's gonna look like, oh, smoking decreased because we increased the tax. My argument's gonna be, no, let's check and make sure that just wasn't, Californians and Washingtonians no longer crossing the border. The other part about this tax that's not super is that only ten percent of it will go to cessation measures, the other ninety percent goes to Oregon Health Authority. And so for a bill that's supposed to help reduce taxes, we're not putting a lot of money towards, I mean, reducing smoking, if we're not really doing a lot of reducing smoke. Do you wanna say anything?
I'll add, the legislature, the legal beagles in the legislature have fun with this. They, they call it a privilege tax, and it's a tax on the privilege of being a distributor for cigarette products at two dollars a pack. And we, you probably saw, yeah, two dollars and fifty cents a pack, really, but you also saw a privilege tax on the sale of automobiles. You'll see, there's also privilege taxes coming in under every, in a loose corner of the carpeting, you're getting privilege taxes coming in, because it's a great way for the legislative body to pull more money out of the homeowner or taxpayer's wallet and put it into their own program for their own benefit. So it's really a troubling notion to have this, quote, be a privilege tax, instead of addressing, because it's, it's on the distributor, that's the guy who plays the privilege tax, he has to tax the cigarette pack buyer, and then the OHA comes by and cleans up the, you know, the resources that have been collected. So it's, it's entirely disingenuous, the way it's structured, but nevertheless, that's what it looks like.
So I have a small retail store, I sold quite a bit of tobacco and quite a bit of beer, wine for a small community, I was the tax collector. Whenever I bought that inventory, and Copenhagen tax, tobacco tax, I paid it upfront, government gets that tax. I do not receive my investment until I sell that. So if I don't sell that product, the tax has already been collected, because I paid it. And as that went up, my ability to be able to put inventory in went down, because the tax went up so high, you know, and it's all relative, whatever side of the business you are, but you become the tax collector for the government out of your own pocket. They call it privilege tax. I, I was a tax collector, so...
You had the privilege of being a tax collector?
Yeah, it was out of my pocket, paid upfront, before you put it in your, your store, you're paying that tax upfront.
And the margin that small retail shops collect on tobacco is minimal, it's not, it's not the thing that makes or breaks your business, but what it does do is it is the draw for customers to come into their store and buy higher-margin items. So if you no longer sell cigarettes in your mini-mart, guess what, your clientele's gonna drop dramatically. The whole point of cigarettes in your mini-mart is to be a draw to buy...
Get them through your door.
Get them through your door, it's a volume business, so...
And then you get the cigarette police come in and try to buy from you. Just a story on that, I had one come in to my store and tried to buy, I picked him out right off, right away, so whenever they gave me their fake ID, I wouldn't give it back, and I said, no, hang on. I said, I'm phoning the police, this is against law. The guy stepped up, said, no, no, we're just doing undercover. I said, no, it's against law for anybody else underage to try to buy, it's against law for you, oh, they got pissed. But anyways, yeah, so anyways, just a short story on, yeah, I tried to get the cops to come down and arrest him for trying to buy cigarettes.
All right, so Oregon voters, be on notice, this vote will be up for your approval or disapproval on November twenty twenty. The last thing that did pass and passed late in the session was driver's cards for illegal immigrants. This had been up for a ballot vote in twenty fourteen, Oregon voters, about two-thirds to one-third said, no, this is a bad idea. Five years later, the legislature says, no, it's a good idea, and it's going to be happening right away. So driver's cards for illegal immigrants happening in Oregon.
In front of the twenty twenty election.
Yeah, in front of the twenty twenty. But we've been assured that the licenses that somebody gets that can't prove that they're in the country legally will not go on the voter rolls. We've been told that, we have yet to see whether that really plays out as well. Scary times. Let's look at Lake County real quick. Again, just the state employee benefits, if you have state employees in your county, which you do, this bill allows it, makes it easier, especially for the school district, to recruit somebody to teach in the school, and then to find a job with the state agency and be able to kind of give a pay increase with, by using their benefits. Tax credit for short-line railroads happened, that was House Bill twenty-one sixty-four. You'll hear me talking out both sides of my mouth on this bill, because there's some really good things in it, some really awful things in it. This is one of the good things we were able to get into it. This should help, use Lake Railway, apply for some of these short-line credits. And then the last thing for Lake County is not yet, but funding for climate, new railroad upgrade, and rest assured, the four people in front of you are working really hard to make sure that we can get that money to upgrade it to a class-two railway, so that Red Rock Biofuels will be able to ship their product on there, instead of using four trucks for every railcar, shipping it to Klima Falls and then putting it on a railcar, which makes no sense in the idea of trying to create a green area in the area of Oregon. And with that, for any final questions or comments you had, I know I went over, but you noticed we only brought one senator with us, and you'll notice which one it is, because he filibusters a lot, but no, we thank you for your time, and take any questions.
Oh, we're honored to have you guys here, and we, we have plenty of time. I do have a couple follow-up questions. Whenever there's the extra money, everybody has their hand up and all that, I get that. But I don't know for sure on these two that I'm gonna talk about, where you guys stand, and what's important or high priority. But regional solutions in Lake County is huge to us. We don't have the wherewithal, we don't have the staff to do a lot of things. Red Rock Biofuels may not have been here without regional solutions. Regional solutions also, we receive money for a railroad through a grant process, hundred and eighty thousand dollars roughly. Our airport receives monies from regional solutions. I said on the executive board, I worked really hard at that, that the government agencies are at the table, we can get to the directors, we can get to whatever the process is. That's important in rural areas, because we don't have the people and staff with expertise, whether it's land use or whatever it is out there. Regional solutions, I'm putting a spill out there, it's been huge to us. So I'm sure you guys don't have something to say on that. So I'm not trying to take the money and just run with it, but whenever it has that kind of impact on us out here, we need it, because of fifty, hundred, two hundred thousand dollars here is huge. And we lose sight of those numbers whenever we start talking billions in the state budget, but for us, those are important numbers. The other one, and Senator knows me, on transportation, very passionate about that. We have low-volume highways out here, it's tough to get money here, we've been very successful over the years getting, working with ODOT and the state. Connect Oregon was one of the only places that we really could go get money and put our cause out there for our railroad and other projects, our airport also. I know Connect Oregon, those monies are earmarked, and they're gonna be earmarked for years. And we have to support I five corridor, we have to support that, because our commodities get there, we need that to be opened up. As you guys know, one Oregon, we gotta be Oregon strong. Eastside, I look at Portland as that's the heart, and all these are arteries going to the heart of Oregon. And if we're having a heart attack up there, we can't get our commodities to market. So I get that we have to do that, but we're gonna have to pull a piece out there and keep some monies that's available for us to be able to go after in our area committee on transportations, to try to help us out here away from there. So you have to balance that if you guys can, and try to get that across at the legislative level, is we understand I five corridor, ninety-seven is our number-one priority in our act, we gotta work on those all the time, but we gotta have this piece out here to help this other, these smaller veins, these smaller arteries get into the heart of Oregon. We gotta keep that alive, too. So as you, I know everybody works hard on that, but if you can articulate that way to the other side of the aisle, that they understand, to make them strong, they gotta have us, and for us to be strong, we gotta have them. So just, those are things that are pretty passionate to me all my years, and I do have to put that in there on the regional solutions. One problem with the state of Oregon, and I talk regional solutions a little bit, land use, and I know there's been some things in there, but we, we had Red Rock coming here just outside of the railroad boundary, ninety acres. It shouldn't have been as simple as somebody in power, whether it be the governor, whoever rubber-stamped that and said, build it, it's three hundred million dollar build-out, impacts all these jobs and everything, but it took a year to be able to get that extended out there. In a rural community, eighty, four hundred square miles roughly, with eighty-two hundred people, that's a simple fix. Land use should be easier than that, should be somebody, there should be policies written, something that there's a way around that. We're fortunate, we got through it, but Red Rock had to spend a lot of money on land use attorneys to get through the process. Thank God we had regional solutions, and our person representing us that helped push that, and it's still pushed up here. Anyways, just some of my passions, I have a lot more. Thank you for, on the gun control, we have a resolution, we support the Second Amendment, very much here within Lake County, our rights. The whole gun control part of the thing is really misrepresented, as far as I'm concerned, and people don't understand that it's not the guns, some people don't understand it's not the guns, we have a people problem, and I would like to see Oregon attract gun manufacturers here and create jobs, and be very pro-gun, be very pro-education on it and that type of things. But you're talking to, I'm talking from a person who's very passionate about guns. Anyways, I'm sorry, I get on my family, I'm sure you guys have some...
Thank you, I articulated that very well.
One of the bills that Mark Owens, the commissioner from Harding County, kind of pushed through was Senate Bill Number Two, which allowed you to use property outside the urban growth for commercial and industrial. What I'd like to see is let us use that for also individuals, you know, so we can build houses outside of the growth boundary, because we have so much land that's, you know, not only farm use, but we have a lot of land that's not useful for anything, you know? If we could build houses on those, that land would be awesome. And so, you know, because we're having such a housing problem here, we have the jobs, we have over forty jobs at Red Rock, we have close to fifty jobs available through the Forest Service, full-time jobs, not just seasonal, but we don't have a place for the people to live. And if we can expand where we can build our homes, you know, it would really help.
And if it's okay if I tag on to that, it was a start in the right direction, about fifty acres would have not done us any good for Red Rock. It needs to be, it's a good start, but for these rural eastern Oregon counties, we have a lot of wide-open spaces, so if that could be amended at some time to go more than the fifty acres, I'm sorry to interrupt, but just something that I've seen already, is a start in the right direction, but we need a little bit, a little better tool to make us attractive for industry and others.
Mr., you're absolutely right.
Mr. You're absolutely right. I introduced a bill that would allow us to do 200 acres in Mountier County for residential development outside the urban growth boundary. And it squeaked and made it through the House and it died in the Senate because it could not get a hearing. But the amount of opposition absolutely was beyond, I mean, it was absolutely flabbergasted to me that so many, the Hood River Orchard District sent a letter of opposition to it. Now, why would the Hood River Orchard District care about putting a house on Class V, non-irrigated farm ground in Mountier County? I mean, the opposition was just nonsensical and totally out of line.
It's not even a request for money, if I correct me.
No, what it was is allow us to take 200, what it equated to 102 acre lots, two acre pieces of ground that's non-irrigated, non-farmable, Class V through eight soils and put a house on it. And the opposition, the pushback was incredible. And we're going to keep moving at that.
And you still have no idea what exactly that opposition is representing?
Well, the opposition was, oh, there's playground. I mean, you can do it within your urban growth boundaries. You can do, and the facts didn't represent that. The facts clearly state otherwise. And so they said, well, that's urbanization. I said, well, how does that urbanization? I mean, you're talking within, you know, half, 500,000 acres, you're going to put 100 two acre lots in there. I mean, and the two acres was because in the original design, that was the rural residential lot size. I mean, it didn't talk, it was not an impacted transportation, it's not impacting infrastructure, not impacting anything. But the urban areas said, no, we really can't allow that because they want to have urban sprawl.
So we need to reclaim all that nice farm ground in the Portland area that you discovered with cement and asphalt today?
Yeah, it was, it was a very frustrating experience. The bill died in the House four different times and we were able to get CPR and it squeaked out under pretty big opposition in the, in the House and the Senate. I wrote the chair of that committee four memos. I talked to him five times and he finally said, there is no support in this, in this chamber for this bill. And there's no reason for that. So it's back to they absolutely don't understand. They think if they're going to allow you to do that, then somebody may want to do that in Marion County.
And they're talking about precedent.
Yeah, it's a precedent setting and they were about that. It's an issue that we need to keep working on.
So I've got to mention one more thing and thank goodness our probation director is here. As, as you guys know, probation dollars were cut this time. You heard earlier talk about our community service and how well that works. This is Jake Greer, our probation director. Thank you for being here, Jake. We do a good job out here. We do a really good job. Jake, our numbers, we have 130 felony probation people right now roughly.
320 and 130.
Yeah.
But we also have about 1,000 misdemeanor possession control substance cases that are also funded.
And how many PO officers do we have?
We have three.
We have three. It's not hard to figure out the numbers and these are felony probation people. You cannot be on top of them all the time. So what happens? Our crime rate goes up. We do an excellent job, three to 130. That sort of puts it in perspective. So as the budget, we do really good. He writes a lot of grants. He does a lot of things and we're very conservative, but that's what's real out here. And it's not only here. Portland has the same problem. So we're not going to see any less people on meth. We're not going to see any less person-to-person crimes. Marijuana has become legal, in my opinion. That's a gateway drug. And now it's a misdemeanor to have meth. So our services that try to keep us safe, that are not felons and everything, are given cutbacks. So anyways, as you're looking at funding, I have a lot of places in the, I'm glad he stepped in because I forgot that one. But we have a lot of unfunded mandates, underfunded mandates. I look at Senator Lithikum and I look at him as commissioner at Lithikum also in the years we worked together. And those underfunded and unfunded mandates in a county that's 78% publicly owned, 22% paying the taxes for stock rate on, how that 22% a lot of farm deferred. And we got to put the same services on the ground at the same compliance, the same policies as other places. So.
Jake, I don't think you were there in our public safety ways and means. I actually voted against the budget because they reduced probation. I made a big stink of it there. Several others participated and followed my lead in asking for money. They really stripped a lot of money out with no explanation. And as Warner was describing, we've got, you know, billions of dollars, thousands of millions of dollars that are excess and all of a sudden we're going to cut the probation numbers. I think it's a $108 million cut overall. And it's like, wow. How do they expect this to work out at the end of the day? I don't know the answer.
And Senator?
Let me say one thing personally. We're doing our part with treatment court. The success of people going through treatment courts relatively low. But just think, just getting one person through treatment court that stays clean and sober and productive in your communities, the savings to the state of Oregon, that adds to that 120, so many billion dollars. Lake County, we have a very successful program. Percentage is going to go a little, but if we get one out of there, it is a very big success. So anyways, just want to put that out.
Senator, I appreciate your comments about the budget. What's frustrating for our Community Corrections Association statewide is state law requires that we do a time study every six years and it must be a validated time study. So in 2006, we did a validated time study. It was kind of willy-nilly. We couldn't really capture things we really wanted to capture. So 2012 rolled around, Department of Corrections took on a national time study, but the legislature wasn't satisfied with that. So we created our time study to capture everything. And we, we were true to the numbers. There was no fluff. In Lake County, our numbers, our numbers were high for our population because we traveled two hours. So that, four hours up to Christmas Valley, Fort Rock area and back. So that takes, that was accounted for. So for, at the end of the day, our ask for Community Corrections statewide is 319 million. They funded us at 268, let's change about 269 million, which is underfunding from our 1719 budget. So this short session coming up, Community Corrections will be active because from what we understand, from what I understand, we were given this budget, but we revisit the dollar amount, final dollar amount, I believe during the short session. Excuse me, during the short session. So I'm hoping that is the case because we will be there and we will be active and trying to recoup some of those funds. Just to Lake County, our numbers are down. It's all numbers. So our allocation was down about 30 cases. What that meant to us and the budget that we were given statewide was about $400,000 to Lake County for a biennium, which is huge. Multnomah County, their numbers were down as well. They're looking at 15, 20 million dollar cuts. So they're looking at some huge position cuts. Fortunately, we have some grant funding, some federal grant funding at the table to carry us over for about 18 months of this biennium. And they're going to be looking at how we can save some money to get through that last six months until the new budget cycle for 2023. But I do appreciate your work. You communicated, you worked with me over the other month. So I appreciate all your work and taking time to meet with us this last session with Commissioner Winters and myself and one of our clients, Joe Greer.
Yeah, Joe was a great guy.
This is a real story. It's nice to have the real story and we definitely appreciate everybody taking the time. Where do you guys see the PIL stuff and all that headed? The reason I ask is I'm going to Washington DC next week for the bill client. And it would be so nice if we had something solid so we can actually plan for our future, you know, where it's, where we're not trying to guess if we're going to get it or if it's going to be short, you know, where we can actually plan for our future because we can't. We can't set goals and visions, which we need to do, you know, because we never know if we're going to.
Right. The PIL money, excuse me, is federal money.
It's all the money.
Right.
US Congress.
58% of Oregon, 75% of Lake County is federally managed. I was a big sponsor of making the public lands, giving the public lands back to counties and states and letting them rent those lands versus the federal government. Comes with supply and demand issues. The value of the land that's under the federal control is enormous and has economic potential that we can't tap because it's their land. It doesn't get taxed, right? So how could you run a business if you had a, if you had a plumbing shop and you had your one van with all your PVC parts and fittings and pipe and 50% of it belonged to somebody else and you couldn't use it? How effective would your business be, right? That's exactly what's going on in Lake County. 50% of the county, 75 actually, belongs to the federal government. You can't use it. You can't touch that fitting. You can't touch that 10 foot length of pipe. You can't use those resources. Try and do your job and do it effectively. Can't be done. So your senators, not state senators, but yeah, Merkley, Walden and the Congressman White, Walden is the representative.
Walden.
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. I mixed them up. Why you, Merkley, Walden?
So we could talk about this for a long time. I tell our congressmen, the senators, preload it with money, preload it with policy, get the forests back healthy and we would take it. But why wouldn't we want it? Because you're doing your job correct. And that's what we really need with these public lands is for there to be strong policy, preload with the dollar because it's their responsibility to get our environment back to a healthy, sustainable way. Our water clean and all that. Why would the counties or the state want to manage it? Because they'd be doing it correct. And I hate to be that bolt, but that's what we need. We need that leadership and that policy. We've talked earlier today about agencies that have directors and everything that's appointed and all that. You guys and our good senators and us are ones that set policies and laws. So we look forward to the time whenever a certain, if the Rs are in charge or the Ds are in charge and people get appointed, that's going to take some of our things forward. So as we're in the minority right now, we want to be careful what we wish for because we would lose that ability to get somebody appointed by a different governor or different things. So, you know, that's sort of the condition whether it's at the congressional level or the state level. You guys get the opportunity to try to set those laws and set those policies, no matter who is in charge in those agencies and everything. So we got to be careful what we wish for at some time because sometimes we wish to have somebody else appointed to some of those positions. And we will, it will cycle and we will get that, that chance again. But I encourage you to look at the policy side and the law side as you guys do. I'm singing to the choir, I know. Really appreciate when you guys bring laws forward and try to change the policy for the good of the people. I appreciate that very much. But sitting here listening, it's like, yeah, well, if we were the majority, the minority, you'd be saying the same thing about us, right? One of the things that I knew a little bit about, but after going to County College, I see it almost under a max plate glass, like it's huge, is, you know, we talked about the Senate Bill Number Two and how they don't see what we see here, you know? And one of the things that I've learned at County College is the distance between urban and rural is so much greater than I even never imagined how big it was. And just some of the comments, some of the western Oregon commissioners made at County College where I'm just blown away. I'm not going to say.
I was there. I was there.
That it's just, it's unreal to me what they, some of the comments they make, but they don't see what we see. And what they have perceived as eastern Oregon is so far from the truth that I think it would help a ton if they could see what we see and the things that we have to do.
I've invited them all out to come visit.
So I think we have public comments.
I'm sorry. I have to leave. I left this meeting. I just wanted to ask these individuals here if they have a business card with them. Please. I'm a dinosaur. I don't have a computer. So I may call you or write to you at any time. Thank you.
I don't have one yet. I do.
Well, I will get you, I will get you one.
Thank you.
I tried.
Thank you. You always see me. I know.
Yes. I'll get you one. Promise.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you very much. And thank you very much for coming to Lakeview and speaking with us. We appreciate it. We get neglected a lot, you know, but things may change. Go for it.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Good seeing you.
But anyways, I mean, going back, and these guys, Mel and James are in Class Two and unfortunately they had us see me have a meltdown or two, but.
You've been good. You really have been.
And, but I mean, just, just that alone is so huge and I don't even know where to start.
So I'll just mention that in the House, we have a program that happens in the even years. It's called Legislative Exchange where the speaker matches up a rural legislator in the House with a urban legislator in the House. And usually it's across party lines. And so I will go out into the Speaker Kotex district up in Portland and we look for Terminal Six and development going up at St. John's and all that. And then she came to Clamath County and I got the, and we weren't able to get out to Lake County, but I was able to get her for a day and just kind of let her see what it looks like from my perspective. So my encouragement to you is try to see if AOC will set that up or you guys can set that up, some sort of commissioner exchange program because I think it benefits us to open their eyes and get in here on the ground.
That is one of the things they have now. We're getting married up with another.
Yeah, I think, I think it's, it's a, it's a win-win. The second thing I'll say is that two topics we talked about, whether it's forest or land use, Oregon's so diverse that what we really need is we need more local control rather than centralized state control or centralized federal control in those areas. So it would be wonderful if you guys could determine far more about how land is used in Lake County than having to follow a bunch of state mandates that may work in Multnomah County, but certainly don't work out here. And when they hear 50 acres up in Multnomah County, they freak out because they don't have 50 acres available anywhere, right? And you guys are just, we just, you know, look as far as, yeah, I can see it's 50 acre, 50 acres. So I, you know, the principle I keep hearing in my mind is we need to drive policy where we can to allow more local input or just local control.
So how do, how do we get that? I mean, what's our steps?
Rule number one of marketing is awareness. And so I think we just have to start claiming the symbol as far as saying, you know, when we see that difference, because Oregon is very diverse. And when we see that diversity and say, well, that may work here, but it doesn't work here, wouldn't it be wonderful if we let you do that policy here, but you let us do it out here our way so that we can benefit our constituents?
Yeah, it's very volatile and we have to have our eyes open both ways. And just as I said earlier, and new commissioners and you guys get an opportunity through County College and everything, they can get very emotional, but we have to be open-minded to look at the culture and the things needed on the website. But we have to be open-minded to look at the culture and the things needed on the website. And by doing that, sometimes that triggers them to have some respect for all we have here on the east side. And hopefully, you know, our culture, our heritage, our, our cattle and our farming and forestry and on and on. You know, it, it, there's just some, sometimes you just don't have the discussion because it just becomes a debate that's not going.
One size fits all.
And it's just the lack of, of understanding of how we operate over here. And I think that having those conversations, not from a judgmental point of view, but more just, you know, just to look, hey, you know, come on out and see what we're like. I do remember one comment regarding Eastern Oregon in general, the entirety of Eastern Oregon. Someone made the comment, a commissioner, asking if, if anyone could even name a library in Eastern Oregon? If we even had one. And they were under the impression that we did not have libraries in Eastern Oregon. And.
We have more per capita than.
It was the first thing I think that was ever built in Lake County before it became a county.
Another one was, another comment was, and I'm not gonna mention the names of.
No, absolutely not.
But we were talking, they had a treasurer speaking, uh, from the west side. And they asked about Eastern Oregon, that we could have more money as well. And they said, probably not because we're unrefined.
Yeah.
And I abode. So, right at this moment.
I, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know what, what you've been passing around up there, but man.
And so, I'm trying to control my temper. Why?
Oh, he did, he near knocked over a table, got out, walked out of the room and then we were all, it's just, yeah.
Here's, here's the important part. They, they cannot understand and they won't understand the, the point that Rep. Reski made, that's the ultimate driver of change is local control. You've got to break the monopoly and the centralization and decentralize and spread power throughout, evenly throughout the system. They'll, that way, you guys can control your own environment, your own landscape, your own land use, your own, um, commercial environs and choose industries that are amenable to the environment where you live. And Portlanders can choose those industries that they like. The trouble is, we've got a centralized government that's outgrowing its britches and is overreaching in every aspect of, of its, its livelihood. We've got to provide enough pressure and enough logic and enough disparity, disparate, uh, interests across the boundaries that exist so that we can effectively decentralize the work that's getting, getting more and more concentrated. The carbon czar we mentioned just a minute ago is a perfect example. Instead of a czar for Lake County and a czar for Clamath and a czar for Harney, you've got one czar who lives in Salem and works at the pleasure of the governor. What's that going to look like for Harney or Lake or Clamath? And, uh, and, and Crook County and Clamath County are, you know, different from Lake County, from Deschutes, from Jackson. And we keep treating them like they're all the same. And it's, it's, it's a fallacious idea.
So, so there's so many things to pick on. So many things to beat up.
It's a target.
And, and you guys do an excellent job. We have to also realize, and I've never been on the school board nor want to be on the school board, but through the equalization formula, these rural areas bring dollars into here. If our schools had to rely only on our local tax dollars, we would be in a lot of trouble. So, those dollars come from you guys and from the other parts of the state. So, we do receive in these rural areas, we have to keep everything in mind as we look forward. It's another of those things, let's be careful what we wish for. Let's see what we are getting and how we can, you know, I, I believe in local control. I believe in a lot of things. But you get back to that one Oregon theory and how do we make us strong as an Oregon? And so, uh, I'm not educated on the school side of it. I know if we lose that equalization part of it, our schools don't have the money now even with that. And so, we are, we benefit a lot of federal dollars coming into Lake County. We benefit a lot of state dollars coming into Lake County. And one of the biggest problems we have is the policies when that money comes in that, that might have, we might get base funding, but it's not enough for the administration part of it and everything. So, whenever you're thinking about those state dollars getting to us, whatever services it is, whether it's mental health, it's public health or any of those things. Base funding is great, but there has to be some administration dollars there to put them on the ground. And as we talked earlier, we go a hundred and three miles one direction, have a meeting in our county and back the same day. And we're mandated to get, have those same services a hundred and three miles away from here in Christmas Valley.
I do more than that just to go home.
Yeah. Well, that's one direction. That's two hundred and six miles.
Yeah.
When we go to Fort Rock, it's two hundred and forty round trip roughly.
Yeah.
So, we're mandated to put those services on the ground here with a population base on a lot of these with just base funding. There has to be a trigger that that base funding jumps up for the administration and for those, those uniqueness. We, we talked, we talked about cap and trade and last night and vehicles and all this. Right here in, in Lake County, we don't have the option to be able to commute the way people do in the city. Our vehicles are a tool to get back and forth. It's, it's survival. We live out here. It's our survival. We don't, we can't bike to work when we're living fifteen or seventy miles away and, and we can't go catch the, the tram and different things. So, this one, one size fits all doesn't really work. But you guys, as you're helping set those policies and get that funding, think of our distance, which I know you do, but I have to have a little extra. Even with the base funding, you have to have a little extra to get those services on the ground because those people need those services.
Well, the, the one size fits all, you know, Connect Four is a great example. Multi-modal, which is great for railroads and airports and highways. But it also included pedestrian and bicycle and whatever.
And trail.
And, and trail, you know? It's some of those enterprises to get people out of their cars and onto the sidewalks. It, it just doesn't work when you're fifty miles from your job. And, um, you know, it, it's just a misguided notion of where those monies could be because that, that bike and ped's portion of Connect Four was millions of dollars.
Yes.
And, and it's like, that's millions of dollars that didn't go to giving us another passing lane on ninety-seven. And it's great to see another passing lane section going in. If we keep on the passing lane sections, we'll get four lanes.
We lost out on the rail on that particular one, but there was some trails that were built.
Right, right.
We couldn't get commodities to market.
Well, and we also, there's other, there's other mistakes like the Lapine Overpass, um, fiasco.
The road to nowhere.
Yeah. And how many millions of dollars, um, you know, got squandered in that? That could have gone to another passing lane on ninety-seven, you know, another section of lanes.
So, I have to speak on that because I was instrumental in helping get that money to there. Uh, that was definitely for a safety issue. We have school buses and, and basically torpedo stopping on ninety-seven. Then we could lose our loved ones and that to be able to go around that was important. And I pushed to the OTC to get that twenty-two million dollars, uh, throw at one project. It's a great project. They just could not predict that there's an underground lake that had started settling. And with that settlement of that lake and all of that volcanic activity there from years and years ago that even their geologists didn't know about, is a reason why that one didn't happen. But if that would have been finished, it would have been an asset on ninety-seven and would have taken that, that really potential dead lake, death trap of that railroad tracks going across there, out of there. So, I have quite a bit of passion on that. Was it wasted money? It ended up being wasted money because of natural, uh, things that happen with environment, so.
Well, yeah.
I, I, I would encourage you to really push and find a way to correct that and, and find the dollars to get that corrected so we don't lose that bus loaded kids sitting there waiting to cross those railroad tracks with a truck and trailer loaded gas behind it and some guy that's on meth runs in the back of that missile right next to it. So, that's my passion for transportation once again, Senator.
And, you know, I was involved in, in Connect Four dollars at the, you know, so I, I know the whole story. But it's unfortunate because the, you know, that's twenty-two million dollars, you know, up in flames. So, you talk about it.
There you go. You even fell right in, up in flames. You got it.
Okay, jeez. I, I have a couple of things, just really real quick. I, I wanted to make sure both my fellow commissioners got in all their questions and their concerns and.
Well, you might stimulate a few.
That's, that's true. That's perfectly fine. One of them is, uh, of course, I really want to thank everyone for their work on, uh, twenty-two sixty-six and just keeping the government out of family income regardless of who they work for. Uh, that was something that we had discussions here, um, with the ESD in our local schools on their ability to recruit teachers and recruit employees. That was going to greatly be impacted, uh, by this bill. So, I just want to thank everyone for their work on that. And also, uh, I don't know if you're familiar with Senate Joint Resolution, uh, Eighteen?
You fill in the blanks.
Um, it, it's basically a, uh, campaign finance reform. I think, I think Senator Knopf was.
Knopf.
Knopf, sorry. Uh, Knopf was working on that. I think he was one of the chief sponsors. If, uh, I have some very grave concerns concerning that bill and, or that, that resolution. So, maybe at some point, maybe we could look back and discuss that. I received multiple emails on that, uh, on that issue, on number eighteen. So, if we could maybe, I forgot to mention that last night, you know, so.
Yeah, and off the top of my head, I can't remember.
Yeah, no, that's perfectly fine. So, maybe at some point I'll try to send an email and correspond on that before the next session. And, uh, lastly, one thing that we kind of skipped over, but I really want to thank everyone for was their work on, uh, thirty-sixty-three. And, uh, because that was a, a really big issue here. I heard a great deal of, um, just fear, terror. And, uh, people were concerned about the government getting into the habit of practicing medicine and deciding what families, parents could do with their children medically, removing exemptions. And with, when you consider the fact, I, I think it, I think it really concerns people when they, when you say, when the government says there is no adverse effects to vaccines whatsoever. That, that is concerning because when you look at the issue of vaccine injuries and you see there's millions upon millions of dollars that have been paid out from the government, from the taxpayer to, to vaccine injuries, people with injuries, that to me says that there is safety issues. I don't have to go and see how many cases there are. I'm seeing millions upon millions just here in Oregon.
Twenty-two billion.
Correct. Yeah, it was actually billions. Just here in Oregon. So, people have to call the BS on that. And they're concerned about when the government says, no, this is one hundred percent safe. No, it isn't. And so, when you remove the individual's ability to decide what's best for their children, that's concerning. If we want to have a conversation about that, if we are right and vaccines do save people's lives, I'm not arguing that they have value, um, then we should have a discussion about that and go through it properly. But when you put government in charge of medicine and practicing medicine, that's a very dangerous road. And I just want to thank everyone for their work on that bill and so, you know, and being a voice for Lake County. And that was the summary of kind of where I wanted to go on that and just thank you guys.
If I remember Commissioner, you came to the hearing on thirty-sixty-three or what, it was a crowded hallway.
It was a crowded building.
Or it was busy back then.
It was very. And Jonathan Lockwood and I, we, we got to be very close friends, uh, or at least got to know each other quite well during that, that period. I, I knew a lot of mothers and fathers here from Lake County that were concerned, including nurses from our local hospital that were concerned about that bill. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. I would like to give the mayor an opportunity. Mayor, do you have anything you'd like to ask the senator or the representatives?
Um, not at this time. Well, there is, there is several issues that I have, but, uh, you know, we could be here probably most of the day. But one, one of my biggest issues and, you know, you talked about the meth problems and stuff like that. But, um, job issues that we have is that people apply for jobs and when they go down for drug testing, can't pass the drug test, but yet they can go up to DHS and they'll hand them everything they need. And that's my, that is a real pet peeve of mine because it's not right.
Maybe they ought to have to pass the same test to get assistance if people.
That has to go through the state, so I would like to see that happen.
Senator Lintecov and I in twenty-seventeen introduced a similar bill where we, we had legislative council draw up a bill like that, uh, that, uh, no, no benefits if you're on drugs. And, uh, we both got a notice back from legislative council in Salem saying that here's the bill, but it has all sorts of constitutional problems with it because it violates constitutional rights. So, you can imagine that didn't go forward, but I'll hear you. Yeah, and I think legislative council was wrong on.
Yeah.
So, where's that? I mean, you know, common sense is common sense and gets overruled.
Yeah, I, yeah, that's, that's really good. I really appreciate the mayor bringing that forward because that's a, that's an excellent point. And here in Lake County, we're trying to find some solutions to issues where the government has gotten involved in some things, where they've actually ended up enabling people on, on a national scale. Um, and the culture has expanded to the point where we're, we're really having to debate about this on a national level for whether or not this is the appropriate way to address some of the poverty issues. Um, we're facing housing crisis. We're facing a lot of these issues. I would encourage and just ask, um, that we continue to have that dialogue and keep those conversations going is the best way to solve this issue. And I, I'm recalling, I'm gonna go out on a limb here, uh, a little bit, real shortly. I recall coming home one night to see my, my folks. I was, I walked in to see my folks and my mom and dad and was talking to my dad about this stuff and I just kind of, he's my sounding board. He's the wisest man I've ever known. And, uh, I was just telling him all my frustrations. My dad's sitting there real quiet and he says, what was the sin of Sodom and Gomorrah? And I, I was like, oh no, here we go. We're gonna get into the Bible lecture here, so. And he says, just tell me, what was it? You know, we kind of went back and forth. And my dad said, in the time of affluence, they did not strengthen the poor. And I really think that there's something to that because we need to strengthen them, not enable them. And we have to be willing to listen to them and we have to be willing to help people. Have a, give them a hand up, but not a handout. And that culture, I think, needs to be, we need to revisit that in American society, not just here in Oregon and in Lake County, and try and find better ways to help those individuals because they are our neighbors. They are the people in our community. And I, I want to be able to help, but I don't want to enable them. Because we are facing drug is, facing more drug issues, more than we've ever seen before in this county. And there's a people problem, going back to what my fellow commissioner said, and a cultural issue that we're not entirely sure how to fix, but we are going to need both sides of the aisle to solve. And so, I, that's, that's my bandwagon. So, thank you.
So, any closing statements before we take a break or is it?
This is a break.
We're, we're going to take a break or we're gonna have problems here.
For two years. Well, just thank you for the opportunity to come, uh, and, and talk with you. And thanks for coming last night and look forward to working with you going forward.
Thank you, Representative.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you, Senator.
Yep.
I'd just like to thank your staff for last night for the, for the logistic component of that. It was a great event. It was great. It was very pleasant.
Thank you.
We're a rock star.
Yep. Yeah.
And I would like to say thank you to you three for your vote so that I can be here.
Oh, yeah. You bet.
Yeah.
It was definitive.
I'm saying now because in a while I may not be.
She'll need it again soon.
I will.
Congratulations and condolences.
So with the board, I'd like to take a 10-minute break. Do we want to come back and rock through this or do we want to take a lunch break and come back and finish our?
I would, I would recommend that we come back and rock through it in about 10 minutes.
That's what we're going to do then. You good with that, Mr.?
Looks like you guys are the majority.
One of these days, we're going to make you a politician. We're going to take a break until about 5:00 after 12:00.